It's six o'clock, we will call the Committee of the Whole to order. But please call the roll.
Morevka, here. Jones, March, Parker.
Yep.
Ham.
Here.
Bowden.
Here.
Approval of the minutes of the July 22, 2019 Committee of the Whole meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes as presented? Not a motion to accept it as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Trustee Parker, second by Trustee Ham.
Parker.
Yes.
Ham.
Yes.
Bowden.
Yes.
Morevka.
Yes.
And March.
Yes.
Right, item four, public comment. Any public comment? Yep, if you wanted to speak, that would be the time.
Okay.
If you could just give your name for the record, please. Did you sign in?
Yes, I did.
Perfect, thank you.
My name is Xavier E. Soto. Everybody knows me as Ed in town, so. But I got two concerns. One of them has to do with a swimming pool that was just recently put up. We've talked about it. I was told that it's international law, that they don't have to have the recommendations, that the code regulations, which in here, in 04, I put up a swimming pool. In order for me to get this permit, I had to go by the rules and regulations of Peatone. So I get my permit, but they turn around, gave me a layout of codes and regulations of what the pool has to have in order to pass. I had to pay for the permit, I had to pay for inspection, and I had to pay for all the extras that go along with the swimming pool. And people across the street from me at 304 put up a swimming pool, no permit, no inspections, it's a 48-inch pool. I've already seen two group of kids, teenagers, go up to that swimming pool and start playing around in the water. Now what's gonna take ten young kids go up to that swimming pool, decide to throw somebody in there? I'm after the safety value of these kids in Peatone. But they're in violation of the code and regulations of the swimming pool. I talked to the code enforcer about it. He told me that they were all within regulations. Just the other day, what was it?
Last week or week before.
I end up pulling out of the village of Peatone. You want to look at it, you're more than welcome. These are your rules and regulations on a 48-inch pool, which that does not qualify to be standard. So I'm asking.
And after we talked, you know, I spoke with the village administrator, she spoke with code enforcement, and I'll let, maybe I'll let Amy talk on that, just to reply to what you're saying, okay?
Yeah. So you're right, you talked to the code enforcement officer, you did. He has been to that pool across the street from you. It's a temporary pool, it doesn't require a building permit?
No, that is not a temporary pool. Any pool that holds 5,000 to 10,000 gallons of water is not a temporary pool. A temporary pool to me is one of these blow-up pools. Even a kid can even drown in that if the person who's responsible leaves it out.
It's a temporary.
Otherwise, all the pools that are in this village, that are 48 inches high and at the minimum 18 feet round, they're all temporary pools, is what you're saying there. Correct?
Can I finish? It's a temporary pool, doesn't require a building permit. Yours was not a temporary pool. Yours was a permanent structure, so it required a building permit.
That pool is a permanent structure. And right here, it even says no extension cords allowed. There was a battle between the people downstairs when they plugged in the electric, because they're saying that does hurt electric, and she had to use a 25-foot cord to get to it. And right here, you got no extension cords. Let's get with it, you know, I'm worried about the safety of these kids in this town.
So what are you, what is your point about the extension cord with the person across the street?
This pool doesn't, it shouldn't even be up. It's a danger and it's a hazard to our kids in town. Not so much the fence, the electrical, it isn't grounded properly. That's a 48-inch high pool, and it's 18-foot, they do not consider those as a temporary
I'm not gonna argue with you.
But you got it right here, the village's own words, right here in black and white. That's what I'm getting the point at.
That's not the code, that is a guideline.
This is, this is a code, this is a code. It's all right here on all the applications, I got it right off the file, right off the website. You wanna read it? You know, I think you're the one I spoke to also when you laughed in my ear about when I started talking about having the containers on private properties, that this isn't a business resident, this is residential. I didn't like that neither. So you know, this is all I have to say. You's either gonna handle this, or you'll say, I don't wanna see no tragedy in front of my house. I seen it too much growing up in the city of Chicago.
Can I say something?
Sure, if you wanna step up and give your, if you give your name.
Oh, I know you're sharing, so. Have you seen the pool? I'm just asking, because it's crooked, it's crooked.
Okay.
About ready to fall over.
It's like fall over. And I'm just saying, this is the same.
You John, passing everything just about?
There's no fence around the pool neither. There is no fence around the pool. And I've called how many times, a couple times about this, and I didn't get no response back, because we didn't even know we had to come here. I called to see if we had come here to go in front of the board meeting. I called and asked for me, for you, the code enforcer, Ms. Warner, never got a phone call back, we got another phone call back, and I left messages. They told me to call to find out how we go about asking, excuse me, asking about this pool thing or something. So all the pools around here that don't have fences around them, which there are many around in town, those are temporary pools you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
Okay. You're saying just this one here is a temporary pool?
This is the most specific.
So this could go for a certain day, and then it's gonna be taken down?
No, that's not what I'm saying, and I'm not gonna sit here and argue or argue with you.
I'm not arguing either, I don't know why you're all saying we're arguing with you, I'm just asking you a question.
You're being argumentative with us.
No, I'm asking.
There's not a code issue over there, there's not a code violation. What I'm saying is, a temporary pool does not require a building permit.
That is not a temporary pool. 48-inch pool, 18-foot round, is not a temporary pool. Smirk about it. You know what, if something happens, I'll put it on your hands. That's all I got to say.
If you both wanna make an appointment.
And the pod's also going section one.
Excuse me, if you both wanna make an appointment with me and come sit down and I'll.
I already called, yes.
I really called, I called, that's why I'm here.
Well, it looks like we're not gonna make much progress if you don't wanna come meet with me. But this isn't the time or place to debate code.
When is it then?
When is it time, where is that?
We're not, I'm not debating the code. My concern is, I'm deferring to Amy and code enforcement to interpret the code. I mean, we can have legal, you know, look at what we've got here. I mean, if there's any way or anything in violation of the code, I totally agree, then we would step up and do something about it. But if they're not in violation of the code, our hands are tied in regards to that.
So what do you consider, how long's a temporary pool? I'm asking, what is a temporary pool? How long is that staying? So what is that then?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, I'm just asking, you're saying it's a temporary pool?
So that's something, so that's something we're gonna have to look at. We're gonna have to look at our code, we're gonna have to look, we'll have legal take a look at it.
Sure.
And get an interpretation of it.
Of a temporary pool?
Yep.
And how big a temporary pool is, and how long it can stay up? Because if it's up all year with the water, that's not temporary.
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
I understand what you're saying.
And the other one?
So this, I, okay. No, I'm just, I don't understand why it looks like we're being argumentative to you. I don't even, never even knew where you were. And I'm not being argumentative just because we're coming up and saying something, I don't think we're being argumentative, as you said. I don't, I don't think that's right. I don't think that's right that you said.
And I encourage, and I encourage everybody, you know, to come here and express their concerns, but we're also not gonna solve the problem, you know, here now. And I think that's kinda the point.
Right. Because if we make the phone calls, then I'm just.
Because we have talked, you know, we have talked, and, well, we've sent code enforcement over, I've sent code enforcement over, I've talked to the village administrator who is.
Those are renters, so you had to talk to the owner.
Right.
Because those are renters. They don't own the building, those are renters, so you had to talk to the owner.
We know that.
Yeah.
I know, I'm existing, that's what I said.
No, no, and I understand that.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not like you've been ignored, I mean, it's, code enforcement has been there several times looking at this. It's been reported back to us, it's been reported back to us, that it's not in violation of code. You're saying it's in violation of code. That's where the disconnect is happening right now. You're, you're on one side, I'm being told something on the other side. So we'll look at it again, I'll, I'll have legal look at it in depth, and if it's in violation of code, then something will be done. If it's not in violation of code, there's nothing we can do about it at that point in time.
Right.
Okay?
Okay, but add one thing to it, because when I talked to the code enforcer, he was telling me to enter an actual code on swimming pool. I told him, look at the village code of the swimming pool. That's what I'm going by, the village code swimming pool.
And we'll take a look at it.
And we adopt the international code.
Then we had another issue about a pot that I talked to you about.
And that pot is supposed to be being removed, is correct?
Yes.
Why, why didn't you say?
It's supposed to be being removed. That's been sitting there for over five months.
Because I was just saying, we were running, getting one, and then we were told you can only have it for, I think it's seven days, or you know, like if you're moving or something, which makes sense, but it's not a.
No, there are parameters on that.
Yeah, right, right.
But this swimming pool issue, Steve, this, this.
I'm not, I'm not arguing with you. I mean, I understand your concern, I have same concerns, and if there's, if it's in violation of any kind of ordinance, we'll act on it.
All right, thanks, Steve.
Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
No problems.
Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Anytime. That's what we're, that's what these meetings are for.
Okay, don't play.
Okay? Any other public comment?
I don't have a comment, I have a question.
Well, if you would step up, could you, make sure you sign in before you leave, and then you can just, yeah, just come on up and give your name, and then you can sign in.
My name is Donna Griggs, and now Trump, he said there is major threats. We needed a building permit for ours, because ours stays open.
Right.
And it's for, anyhow, my concerns is the water. And I know it's a real touchy something for all you guys, but I'm noticing my pool is needing more chemicals. My dog will not drink the water.
See, you're getting the exact, you're getting the exact same water you've always got at this, at this current time.
Okay.
It's still well water, it's still being, as far as we've been informed, you know, from Aqua, who is now running the treatment plant and so forth, it's still the same process going on, so that hasn't changed.
Now, are we gonna be billed by you guys then?
No, 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 so Aqua owns the system, okay? So they're gonna continue to bill, we are gonna switch over to the Kankakee River water source at some point in time.
Okay.
And that's when, you know, rates will, rates will either change in January of 2020, if the water is here, or if the water, whenever the water gets here afterwards. Right now, they're on kind of a, you know, a slowdown on bringing the water to town until they get, you know, all of their other issues, yeah, because they wanna make sure that nothing happens here. And that's exactly why, they've been here a couple meetings and explained that, you know, to the public. So right now, we're gonna stay with the well water, and as long as we're on the well water, the rates will remain the same.
So that's why the taste is different, then?
It's not any difference, the exact same water you had.
It's different, though, that, even I always did. But I just thought that was kinda strange. So as far as like needing extra filters, we really don't need them then.
It's, that's really kind of a personal preference, I guess, yeah.
That was my only question.
Okay, no problem.
Thank you.
You're, no problem. No, 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 no problem. Any other public comment? If not, we'll move on to item five, Peatone Manhattan Boundary Agreement.
I think if you recall, maybe several months ago, I brought this up, that our boundary agreement with Manhattan was gonna expire, has expired actually. But no worries, I don't think anything major's going on, we're, we've got a little distance between us, however, we certainly need to enter into a new agreement, and you have a red line version in front of you that Michael and the attorney from Manhattan have been working on. I just wanted you to see the changes that really Manhattan has initiated. And I don't think that probably over the years that we've probably been working on, or you've been working on boundary agreements with the communities that you have them with, have this many changes probably been brought forth to you, so I wanted you to see these, the red line version before we would bring it forth for adoption. So I don't think anything really major, but still wanted you to, to see the actual differences in the language and just some cleaning up and the only other difference is that we digitized the map, as you can see on the screen behind you, and the original map was kinda drawn on, I think, with, with a pen or something, and so the boundaries have not changed really, however, as it was digitized, you could see that some of the lines are drawn through properties, not necessarily, really not making sense in some areas, and so I just wanted to, for example, point out this, for example, as you can see the existing line being blue, and it kinda cut through those properties that you see where, like 101 and 204, it kinda would, would cut through those properties, and it would make, it would be difficult to describe, maybe an illegal description? I, oh, like, well, that would be a fair, fair statement.
It would also cause problems at the time that people were coming for annexations or whatever else, because your, their lots are split.
So we just wanted to clean that up and change the boundary line, like, so the purple would be, would be a new proposed boundary line. So with this, with this new boundary agreement, we would propose to change the boundary line for this reason. So we have some, this would be one proposed boundary line, so it wouldn't be anything substantive, it would just, we would just wanna clean it up to make it be a little bit more square, so we, it would be close to the original boundary line, but just kind of make it go something where it would make a little bit more sense. So this would be an example of that.
How old was the old agreement of how long?
Twenty, twenty years.
And how long will this one be for?
Twenty years, you can, you can do 20 years under the state law. And Amy was describing the old map, you can see, the old one was just kind of like a Sharpie drawn, drawn through a, through a map, so. So it's good to have it digitized, so we have a little more certainty.
Anything else you wanna add on the actual red line version?
Yeah, I just wanna, you know, you did a good job of kinda summing up, we were trying to do a couple things. One, in the whereas clauses, where you'll see most of the changes occurred. Manhattan was in a situation where a developer had challenged the authority to do this, because the state law talks about a boundary agreement covering the area that's one and a half miles from the village border, which is your traditional planning area outside your jurisdiction. Well, Manhattan and Peatone aren't that close, so there's stuff that's not one and a half miles within either of them, in between. And so that issue of somebody challenging Manhattan and somebody else's map was cleared up without a court ruling, but we were trying to clarify in the whereas clauses here, that we're not just relying on this one state law to do it, we're relying on our, our traditional authority to intergovernmental, enter into intergovernmental agreements with other units of local government, and our general contracting authority. So, so we have a number of things to point to in the event somebody ever raises that kinda nonsense about our agreement. And the other thing is going through the one that was 20 years old, and that might have been, you know, a renewal of an even older one, so some of the wording seemed kind of awkward and outdated, so we just, in some places, tried to make it a little clearer and then easier to read. So those are the, the couple things, but there's not a lot of substantive change at all in the agreement, it kinda carries through the previous version in that sense.
Are we working cooperatively with Manhattan?
Yes.
Or are we working adversarily?
Nope, haven't been any issues, so everyone's kinda working together, essentially keeping the same terms, keeping the same line, haven't been any issues that I'm aware of between the two communities, so it's kinda maintaining the status quo, but getting a new agreement in place.
And kinda working together to prevent developers causing problems.
Right, yeah, and one of, not, not just developers, but each other, so it provides certainty in those cases where we get to a development that's around that line, so that we, everyone has a set of rules to follow, and there shouldn't, it should eliminate conflict between the communities.
As we've worked with all the other communities around us too, through the years.
I think now's time to tighten these things up.
Oh, yeah.
Before something starts happening. Why include those three lots to the north, 100, 101, and?
So you'll see, if, there's a set of maps that, that have all the lines, and for the most part, the lines were drawn on streets.
Yep.
Right, which made sense, and then where, in places where they were bisecting the lots and kinda got off the streets, in talking to Manhattan and talking to people who've been around Peatone a long time, nobody knows why the old map was done the way it was. So our direction to the engineers was, okay, let's stay as true as we can to the old line, but try to keep it to streets and natural boundaries, so we're not cutting through anybody's line.
Right.
So when you see 100, 101, those are, that red line, that's the existing boundary line that we had, and then instead of doing that weird V dip, we're just going down the street there, so that's gonna be on the Manhattan side, all this other stuff is gonna be on the Peatone side.
Stunkel is the street, right? You're saying that the purple is the new line, right?
Purple is the new line, yeah.
Somebody's backyard.
Right, not somebody's backyard.
It looks like it's a backyard.
Oh, does it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Which I mean.
So is it across the street from each other? Because it looks like they're butted up against each other, like the backyards.
I mean, if you were to put on Ariel.
You're saying is this, is this a street?
That's a backyard.
Yeah.
So the people across the street, they're there, because they'll go to Manhattan School?
Stunkel is the next school.
The backyard, the one with Manhattan.
Yeah, it is somebody's backyard.
Okay. Yeah, point well taken.
Yeah.
So for example, isolate those three homes.
So we had actually talked about staying on Stunkel, and I, I'm sorry, I don't know why they didn't, and we could talk to engineers and find out why they chose that.
It's really peculiar, really.
Yeah, maybe they were taking too literally the direction to stay close to the existing line, but, but we really want it on the streets, because that's, that just makes the most sense. So we just got these maps, I think, yesterday.
Yeah.
And we'll, the revised ones. So we'll go through them and work through these issues. So that, and there has to be like a notification published by both Manhattan and Peatone before you give final consideration of this, so we have a little time to kinda go through the maps and figure everything out before we tee this up for final approval.
Something makes sense on the road.
Thanks for putting that up.
Any other questions or discussion on that?
Any other lines that aren't contiguous, and they don't fall either between Peatone, who covers that jurisdiction? Or are they all contiguous and it's straightforward and?
Yeah, so there's a starting point and an endpoint that was determined at some point in the past here in the north, and I can't, this is too small to even see it on the south.
I'll see, I only think I can go, I have all of them.
Where you probably run into boundary agreements with other communities, so we're just trying to draw the line in the space between Manhattan and Peatone, where they meet and they don't have agreements with somebody else. But, but it is a contiguous line all the way down between the two communities, so there shouldn't be any gaps or weird gray areas that nobody knows who it touches. Do they have the revised maps? Okay, well, we'll look at it, and in your final packet, we'll have all the revised maps for you to look at and see if you note any concerns at that point, but like I said, we'll try to work through these issues ahead of time.
I'll just kinda scroll through, these are, so here's another one.
That, that looks like the same one.
Oh, same one, oops.
They kinda repeated stuff or something. So for the most part, they're like this, where we're just going down the street.
Yeah, well, let's take a look and.
Sure.
We'll bring the revised, final revised back to the board. All right, item six, new cannabis legislation.
Sure. So you guys have probably seen in the news all the excitement about the new recreational cannabis law, and so it becomes effective January 1, 2020, and just by its nature, it's gonna have a number of impacts on local governments, and so we wanted to talk about it a little bit, because there are a few decisions for you to make regarding this as So we gave you some materials, we have an FAQ that we prepared, and then a little checklist and toolbox, and so I can, you know, the, the most significant decision that you need to look at now is, within the Act, there's a number of different, what are referred to as adult-use cannabis establishments, which are different types of businesses. So there's dispensaries, where you actually go and buy it, there's cultivation centers, which are big indoor facilities, where they'll be growing cannabis and selling it to the licensed dispensaries, and there's infusers, who kinda take the raw product and make things, and then give it to dispensaries. There are craft growers, which is like a, almost like a craft brewery idea, I guess, where they are a smaller cultivation center and doing assumably different stuff, and it's all new, so, oh, and there's transporting organizations, so it's all very heavily regulated by the state, so to be able to transport this, you're gonna have to be a licensed transporting organization. So those are all different kinds of cannabis business establishments, and one of the things that the state legislature did in the Act was say to local governments that you have the option of opting out, of allowing those business establishments within the community. So that's kinda decision one, and we wanted to have that preliminary discussion. Are you guys interested in one or more of those uses being able to locate in the village? If you're not, we create an ordinance that says you opt out, and we look at whether we need to do anything with the zoning code, and you kinda leave it at that. If you are open to having dispensaries here, or cultivation centers, or any of them, you can kinda pick and choose, do you want maybe just cultivation centers and not dispensaries, or vice versa? So some communities are kinda looking at that. But if you are open to having one or more of these businesses, then we need to start the discussion and develop zoning code text amendments, so that you can have these uses here. And so there's not gonna be a huge rush of places opening on January 1, because the only people who are set up to open on January 1 are existing medical cannabis dispensaries within the, within the state, who already have licenses, and they're allowed by the new law to have a new secondary location where they can sell recreational cannabis, either at their existing location, or they could conceivably go to a different town and say, our secondary site's gonna be here. If one of those was looking at Peatone, you probably would have been approached by now, because they're very eager to have all their zoning and everything in place, if that's what they wanna do. So more likely, you're gonna be approached after January 1, as these companies start ramping up to, to open sites that are allowed to be open later in 2020 for dispensaries, et cetera. So we wanna have everything kinda buttoned up, so we know, are we a community that's gonna welcome these, or if we're not, then we have the zoning in place, so they can, we can tell them that, and they can move on and go elsewhere. One of the big attractions to local governments in allowing these is you have the ability on top of the taxes imposed by the state, which range from 20 to 35 percent, depending on the use and what you're doing, you have the ability to impose your own 3 percent sales tax on the cannabis sales, which, you know, depending on how many there are in the area, could end up being a significant revenue source, so people are excited about that. And that stacks on top of your own, your existing share of the local sales tax, and whatever other taxes you might have in place, so that's interesting to some local governments, but a number of places are opting out as well, so it's kind of a, a policy decision that you guys need to tackle. Beyond that, there are a lot of subjects that the Act talks, touches on, like your personality, personnel policy, I know we're working on the personnel policy, we have to address some things in there regarding cannabis, and, and work with the police department on how these are going to be prosecuted. on how these are going to be prosecuted. And it still is illegal in many instances. So we can't stop people from using it within the community, within the privacy of their home. But nobody's allowed to smoke publicly or do some other things. So we want to have our ordinances up to date in terms of prosecuting those kind of uses, just like we do with open alcohol where it's prohibited. And we'll work with the police department. There's a lot in the act about expunging people who, expungements for previous arrests of small amounts of cannabis. Some other employment issues. And to the extent that you guys decide that you are open to having dispensaries, for instance, within the zoning, we can put certain regulations on there. So, you know, the state act says they can be open from 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. Okay? So but if we make it a special use and we decide at that particular location, because it's, you know, adjacent to residential or for whatever reason, even though it's in our commercial district, 6:00 AM is too early, we're going to change the hours as a condition of our special use. We can do things like that. Having them turn in security plans for review by the police department. There's a bunch of different things that we can put in your zoning code about use standards that they have to address as they're coming in as with an application for a special use. If you wanted to make them a permitted use where they don't have to get any special zoning authority, so long as they're meeting certain regulations, then we don't have the ability to put kind of zoning conditions on them. So a special use is something we've decided is okay generally in a particular zoning district. But because of its particular impacts, we want to take a closer look at it on a case-by-case basis when you come and you request it. And so things like parking. So in other states, we've seen that these tend to draw a lot of interest and some places have had parking problems. So as a special use, we can make sure that they have adequate parking, make them turn in a parking plan and kind of address all those kinds of things. I mentioned the tax, use and possession. So that's kind of the quick overview. But it's a, it's 610-page act, state act, which I've, which I've been through. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you guys have any particular things that you're curious about.
So this won't be like a licensed, like licensed liquor establishment?
Right. So one of the things that the state did, they have a very extensive licensing process for all these uses. And when the state does that, we don't have the ability to do individual business licenses like we do with the liquor. They didn't delegate that kind of authority to us. But they have given us some ability to control it through the zoning process. So we want to leverage that to the extent that we can in lieu of the business licensing.
So the infusers, is that basically like a manufacturing plant? I mean, they're not going to be selling, we wouldn't be collecting sales tax off of that, would we?
A lot of times people like put them in their motions.
That's an interesting question. I don't remember exactly whether there is a tax associated with sales made by infusers to dispensaries.
Yeah.
There are sales taxes, not the 3%, there might be the 3% on the dispensary sales. There's a set of taxes on the dispensary sales. The infusers I'd have to look at. But yeah, they're taking, you know, there's different variations of cannabis and different strengths and different concoctions where they're mixing it with whatever. And so that's kind of what the infusers are doing, working with oils and everything else.
So you're asking like if.
But your question is, I can, I can get back to you on whether there's a tax.
So what I'm saying is if we let an infu, what kind of.
Is there an advantage to letting an infuser?
What kind of revenue would we get?
Right.
That's all I'm asking.
Okay, and that's a fair question. And I don't know the answer off the top of my head.
And then would they also be subject to our business development district tax?
Yes, yes. If they were to locate where, within a business district, that 1% would be on top of the 3%.
And the growers, they don't pay tax, so we wouldn't get anything off of the growers, correct?
The growers do pay a tax.
They do pay a tax. Sales tax?
It is a separate tax. Let me check the ethic here and see if we can nail this down.
Infusers may only sell or distribute cannabis to a dispensing organization or is otherwise authorized by a rule.
Aren't they resellers then?
Yeah. Like almost like a wholesaler to a.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, I don't think they're.
So if people are selling out of their house, they'd have to get a permit or a business permit if they're trying to sell it out of their house, wouldn't they? Like if it's like Mary Kay or something, you know?
Yeah, but I don't think that's.
Here's some Mary Kay cannabis lotion.
The cost for getting into this game at the licensing level is very high. So you're not going to get people like doing kind of a Mary Kay model.
So from a tax standpoint, the only thing we would want would be the dispensers. That's the only thing we want to get income off of this locally. Is that correct, David?
Maybe correct. I believe.
That was a statement that became a question.
Question, yes.
I believe there is some tax advantage for having dispensaries to, or I'm sorry, the cultivation centers.
To the village?
Yeah, but I'm going to have to get back to you.
Okay. So if we, if we, if we okay it, can we rescind it later?
You can, right, so.
Even after businesses have been established?
Yes, and those would be grandfathered. They wouldn't go away.
Okay.
But they would be grandfathered, so, you know, like with a special use, if they were to go out of business or that particular licensee ending, we could get rid of that.
If we start prohibiting it, if we learn more about it, then we can always add it.
You can always add it, yes. So you have the ability to go back and forth. So some, some communities are taking kind of a wait-and-see, let's see how this shakes out. One, one mayor referred to it as, we want to be settlers, not pioneers, right? And so he wants to kind of see how it goes. And then if it seems to be, towns aren't having a lot of trouble, that it seems pretty straightforward, it's generally accepted, then we're going to get in the game.
That's kind of where I was personally leaning, but I think we can gather a little more information at least to bring back to the board as far as revenue sources.
Sure.
Then we can kind of weigh our options and kind of come to a consensus at that point in time. How do we proceed?
Can you? There's other states that have done this. I mean, do you have any research or has anything been done as far as, you know, is it detrimental to a community to have a dispensary? Is there, you know, any effect of property value or anything? I mean.
So like anything, you can, there's studies showing both things, right? But generally, the consensus seems to be, and I heard this from one of the police chiefs who's spoken to chiefs and other in Colorado and elsewhere, and they were not getting a lot of problems.
Right.
You know, one of the bigger problems and was that especially when Colorado started, it was, it's all cash-based, right? Because of the federal banking restrictions. So they're coming into Village Hall and state entities with, you know, pillowcases full of cash. And so it's, it's an attraction for theft, for instance. But in terms of like the impacts of, on the immediate neighborhood, other than the parking congestion and traffic type of stuff, they haven't seen a ton of problems. And in fact, people who've been in some, in other jurisdictions say they can be very nice, you know? There's nice waiting rooms and all kinds of stuff, so.
I would be in favor of allowing them a special use. I mean, I think they're going to open other communities and why we shouldn't take this as a source of revenue.
And you could pick and choose what zoning district they go in. So if you think you don't want it, you're downtown zone, a business district, but you're okay having it in the office or industrial areas, put it there. And people who are interested in going will still go.
Right.
The police chief you were referring to from Colorado, did he say anything about an increase in cannabis DUIs or?
Yeah, so the DUIs are challenging. I mean, there's plenty of people driving stoned right now. And one of the problems that the police departments have is there's no easy test for this like there is with a DUI. But I think that's kind of a short-term problem. There's so much money in coming up with a test that is effective, that I'm sure there's all kinds of people trying to scramble to come up with something and get it to market. But what happens is the officers, if they have reasonable suspicion, can put somebody through the traditional walk-the-line and touch-your-nose type of tests. And they also, just like they do now, they can smell cannabis oftentimes when somebody rolls down their window. So they still have the ability to prosecute those kind of things. I will bring back some, some of the information that I've seen circulated on other states. And there's a couple, like the International Municipal Lawyers Association has compiled information from different states and impacts that they've gauged. So I'll give you some of that for your next board packet to kind of look at and see what other states are saying about their experiences.
Michael, above the tax, how do we collect that? Does that 3% act just on the cannabis sales?
Right. Once you implement it, the Department of Revenue will, will collect it, segregate it, and then pay it back to you.
Okay, so there's nothing that administratively we have to do?
Nope.
Okay.
Other than pass the ordinance and turn it in.
You did say it was cash. Does it sell stolen, be cash?
Well, so there, I think some of those problems have been solved. I think they can keep accounts at savings and loans now, but not banks. There's speculation that the federal government will, as we get closer to election, may, may open up the banking possibilities.
How are they regulated as far as, are they, I mean, having an all-cash business like that is just kind of asking for people to come and report income and therefore report what they have to pay in tax? I mean, how closely controlled or audited are they?
The Illinois system, by all accounts, because it was, it's been worked on for a long period of time, this legislation, it involves four different departments, Department of Revenue, Department of Agriculture, Professional, Department of Professional Regulation. It's all very closely watched. So everything that's coming out of these licensed dispens, cultivation centers is going to be tagged from the second it gets done. And so that's how they kind of keep, keep, keep an eye on this.
So the difference between, so let's say somebody opens a dispensary, but they also dispense medical marijuana, is that still a thing?
Yep.
Then, so is that medical marijuana not taxed?
Medical marijuana is taxed at 1% like other medicines. And you guys already, when, when they approved medical marijuana several years ago, we did code amendments to regulate medical cannabis and cultivation, dispensaries and cultivation centers within the community, which I think were put in, in the industrial districts.
So will these dispensaries, will they all have the ability to sell either recreational or medical?
No, you choose ones. So the ones that, that are going to come online January 1st will be the new recreational. So if you don't have an existing medical, all that would be here January 1st would be a new recreational. But yeah, somebody could conceivably, going forward, ask for something that does both. And there's different regulations, there's a lot of overlap, but there's a different kind of set of regulations. So one example of that is when they did medical dispensaries, they put in these distant regulations, got to be 1,500 feet from schools, daycares, all this list of stuff. In recreational, they didn't put that. The only distance regulation is 1,500 feet from another dispensary. But you have the ability to say, we deem these particular set of uses, whether it be schools, libraries, whatever, to be sensitive uses and we're going to put in some distance regulations. So if we get to the point where you're considering this, we can talk about where they might go and what kind of distance regulations you guys want because you do have that ability.
Because my other concern is if they are a combination that people would come in and, you know, people running the shop would have some guy there giving out prescriptions for medical marijuana to avoid paying tax.
I just don't see it happening as heavily regulated as that's going to be. I don't think it's going to be much of that kind of fly-by-night shady activity.
Does administrative oversight want to take a look at this and bring a recommendation back to the board or do you want to bring it just back to the board as a whole?
It's up to you.
We can bring it back to the board as a whole.
Yeah.
That's fine. We will do that. So yeah, just some more information on the revenue, on the dispensaries and the cultivation.
Yep.
Okay, I have one quick question about the revenues. Do we have the 3%? Do we have, can we only spend it on certain things or are we limited in?
No.
We can put it in general fund.
Just keep that in perspective, a million dollars of sales is 30 grand for us, so.
There's certain additional state taxes that will come back in some form to the community regardless of whether you have it. And that's for adminis, well, no, that's only if you have it, but it's for like enforcement purposes. But the 3% is just general.
Okay.
All right, let's move on to small cell technology.
Okay, so this is another hot-button issue. We talked about this last, a year ago July, when we first passed our small cell ordinance. And we are at the point now where the telecommunications companies are getting ready to deploy their 5G technology. And so I thought it was a good time. We've got a couple pieces of business in terms of design standards and an agreement with Verizon. You'll see other providers coming. So it seemed like a good time to kind of go over small cell again and give you the lay of the land. Does everyone, I don't, I don't want to take up too much time because I know we got the regular meeting coming up. But so I'll go fast, but I just wanted to, I don't think we had a PowerPoint last time, so some of this might be useful for you. First of all, I just wanted to give you some pictures of what this might look like. So these are some small cell installations. And a small cell, we're all familiar with the big macro towers, the big cellphone towers, 110, 150 feet tall with the antennas on them. And communities have been dealing with those for about 20 years. And small cells started in about 2012 as a way for these telecommunications companies to supplement their existing coverage by putting these small, low-powered antennas in areas where there was a lot of data usage. So especially where you have residential areas where everybody has a lot of devices that they didn't have five or 10 years ago. In some cases, they, the big macro towers were not enough. So they started building these in certain areas. And they generally consist of an equipment box somewhere on an existing utility pole with an antenna at the top. And so you see, the one on the left is what's called a cantenna, that round cylinder at the top with the equipment further down. And these first two are kind of more outdated pictures. The equipment keeps getting smaller. So these are from several years ago. So those equipment boxes that looked, on there to be the size of like a college refrigerator have gotten smaller. So they're more now like this. So these are some kind of more up-to-date pictures of what small cell can look like when you implement design standards and work with a provider to say, we want these to look good in our community. So the middle one, for example, in towns that have kind of decorative light poles and they're downtown or wherever, you can work and develop the design that you attach to your design standards and say, we want the, we want it to look like this. We want a black metal cylinder. The antenna's in the top, but it's not much separation and it kind of looks like all one structure. The equipment, if you put up these new aluminum poles, can be inside the base, so there's no wires running up and down the outside of the pole. And in many cases, you can use it for street lighting if it's replacing existing streetlight or you work cooperatively with the telecommunications providers. The one on the right is one where you see an existing streetlight standard, again with the cantenna on top. So those are just some examples of what this can be. And this is a kind of a good graphic that I found somewhere. And it describes kind of the evolution of all these networks. So in 1991, we see 2G where it was just, we had BlackBerries and it supported texting, right? And then in 1998, 3G had internet access in addition. 2008, we. 2008, we went to 4G, our existing 4G network, which is what all your phones are on right now, with texting, internet, and streaming video, and then, as we get into later this year, and especially in 2020, these telecommunications companies are going to be rolling out 5G, which is the next, the next phase of all this, and it's going to have ultra-high depth and 3G video, and importantly, it's going to be able to support all these small home functions, or smart home functions that we now have with smart thermostats and unlocking your car through your phone and smart refrigerators and washers and dryers and everything else. And importantly, when we get to the point where we have driverless cars, a 5G network is going to be built out enough at this initial stage to even support that. So, when the telecommunications providers talked about how they're going to roll out 5G, they, they got together and said, "Well, we're not going to do this by putting up a bunch more of those big towers, but we're going to use small cells, so we're going to put small cell, and we'd like to put them on existing municipal infrastructure or other utility poles, so on top of comment poles, on top of your light poles." And in order to do that, they introduced bills in all 50 states that allowed them to do that at rules that they kind of made up. And so, as you might imagine, when this came, municipalities were not super excited about the idea, because, you know, even with federal regulations on telecommunications, we've, and where they could go, we've always been able to, to protect our own utility poles as our own, people can't put stuff on there without our permission, and this legislation proposed that they would be able to, that they, we have minimal ability to say no or to say, "You should go put it, put it on this instead of that," or "Put your new pole here instead of there." So, it impacted our traditional zoning authority, it made these permitted uses, and it even took in communities that had existing contracts with a Verizon or AT&amp;T as to where this stuff could go, it threw those out the window and said, you know, "The legislation controls, and that contracts are good." So, so, there was a lot of back and forth at the legislative, at the General Assembly, it was defeated once, it came back, and ultimately, because they made some concessions, it passed and has been law for a year now, but not much has happened because they haven't had the 5G technology ready to go. So, now we're at the point where it's ready to go, and, and, you know, the legislation started out bad and got a little bit better, but it's still not great for municipalities, it's not, it's not great to have these companies be able to come in and say, "We're going to put up 100 new poles in your town," and, and you can't do much about it. But we're stuck with it, so, just to give you a quick overview of some of the things, a reminder of some of the things, and, so there's a big state law, again, like the, the cannabis one, a long state law with a lot of new language in it, and then we took that, those, and, and made a new chapter of your code last year. So, we have certain limitations on the zoning, so they have to be permitted uses whenever they're in the right-of-way, so wherever existing streetlights and utility poles are, they're permitted use, we can't put these new poles or their pole attachments through, through a zoning process. They can attach to our poles, they can put up new poles, all of that is, is permitted. There's a lot of processes in the, in the act about how this all works, there's time limits on, on, when they put in these applications, when they come next year with 15 applications to put up these small cell installations, we only have 30 days to determine whether they're complete, we have 90 days to make a decision on them if they are just putting stuff on existing poles, 120 days if we're talking about new poles, and again, we have a limited ability to say no. There's caps on height, they can't be taller than 45 feet, but that's still fairly significant depending on where you're talking. There are protections in the act for public safety technology, they can interfere with our, our police signals, for instance, so if we discover that there's problems with that, we can address it. But where we do have some control is these design standards, so something we're going to do over the course of the next month is, is enact these, these reasonable design standards, which are a set of rules that we're going to give these telecommunications providers and say, "You're welcome to come to Piaton, we understand we can't do much about where these go, but they have to look nice," right? So, we don't get these kind of crappy wires sticking out all over the place.
Are there rules about how many they can put?
There are not, they, they, and, and so, it depends how their coverage network is set up, but there may be, AT&amp;T may put these up every several hundred feet, and Verizon may do the same thing. We have a community recently where they came in with a map saying, "We're putting up 140 poles, and here's where we want them to go."
A lot of radio frequency going on.
Yeah, now, radio frequency, we can't do anything about that, it's governed by the federal government with their FCC standards, so we can't deny based on radio frequency. They are very low-power though, which is why they need them every few hundred. There's, there's protections for historic landmarks, so they can't put anything on the windmill, for instance. There are, and there's, there's information on spacing of ground-mounted equipment, so we can't have them cluttering up our, our right-of-way with all these equipment boxes, and like I said, as the equipment's gotten smaller, they're moving away from these kind of ground boxes to more stuff on the pole anyways. We have caps on the, on the application fees, $650 for a single pole, $350 for, where they package them together with multiple poles in a single request, and $1,000 for new poles, those are statutory caps, so we can't do anything about that. And then, when they put them on our, our poles, we get $200 a year. Their original proposal was $20 a year, so we were able through negotiation to get it up to 200, but that's as much as you can get under the state law. But they do enter into an agreement, so we have in your packet this proposed agreement with Verizon. Our firm, for all the municipalities we're working with, came up with kind of a template that we wanted to use, that provides a lot of protections for, for things that aren't covered by the act or, or in your ordinance about whose electricity gets used, what happens if it's abandoned, what happens if it gets knocked down by a truck, all those things are kind of covered. Verizon came to us and said, "We had some changes to your template agreement, we negotiated back and forth, and have one that we, as your attorneys, are okay with, but that doesn't mean that you guys can't look through this agreement, and if you have, Verizon understands that if you guys have particular concerns about it, that we can make amendments, but otherwise, they're eager to, to get this approved, because they, they want to be ready to go with 5G when they can." And, and the process is going to be, when Verizon is ready with you guys and they've done their engineering, they're going to contact you as their proposed pole locations, and we can get together with staff and Troy and kind of walk the sites before they put in their applications and talk about these, and so far, they've been somewhat flexible if we say, "Well, that, we don't like that location, that's a, putting a new pole outside somebody's picture window, we'd rather it was on this, you know, here where the lotlines meet, so it's not right outside somebody's view, or, or on the corner, or can we move it back, you know, to the extent that there's alleys or other places that we can put them?" They'll, they'll talk about that, as long as it's technically feasible and isn't going to be more expensive to them, we can kind of work with them, and they're somewhat flexible on that. So, that'll be kind of the process, but, but at that point, we'll have this agreement in place, they'll work through the locations, and then they'll, they'll want to roll these out and get going with their, their work in putting these up and, and giving everybody 5G. And it is kind of exciting technology, so, you know, once five, people get going with 5G, they're going to be wanting this service, so, you know, not only is there not much we can do, but our residents and businesses are going to want it at some point as it becomes more commonplace. So, you have to keep that in mind, but it is important to regulate it, so we get things that look more like the, the picture on the left as opposed to the right. And, so, you know, we have a few next steps left to do, like I said, we approved your ordinance last July, we've got some draft design standards in the packet, we have an application that we'll work with for staff for when these telecommunications companies come to you, we have the draft agreement with Verizon, we've also negotiated a, a version with AT&amp;T, which is very similar, and then we need some minor amendments to your zoning ordinance. So, that's kind of the lay of the land in order to, to be ready for what's coming in the next year here. Any questions on that?
All right.
All right.
Very good. So, I think we are at the end of the committee of the whole, so I entertain a motion to adjourn the committee at a hold.
Come on, sit.
Second?
Second.
Motion by trustee Moreka, second by trustee Han.